Good evening, I'd like to call to order the November 7th meeting of the Groton Town Council. Madam Clerk.
All councillors are present except councillor Baumgartner, but I understand he's on his way.
He is, he's running a few minutes late. All right, salute to the flag.
Just got my seat.
Mr. Trejo, would you please lead us in the salute, please? Thank you.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, let's see. Roman numeral three, recognitions, awards, and memorials. I think we're going to hold off, we have something coming up for another meeting, so we'll hold off on that. Public hearings, we have no public hearings. So we are on to receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. This is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, please sign this sheet on the table at the front of the meeting room. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentations should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councillors will only ask questions, thank you, in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during the responses to citizens' petitions portion of the meeting. And we have one person signed up under citizens' petitions, Portia Bordelon.
Portia Bordelon, 159 Shannon Cost at Parkway, obviously Groton, Connecticut. First, I just wanted to start off by saying how proud I am of Groton and the democracy that was shown here by the voter turnout at all the polling stations, and in particular as not only statewide. I encourage voters to continue to come out like that, so that your voice is heard, no matter who you voted for. It's important to have the numbers turn out to truly, clearly represent our town, the way that we did last night was amazing. With that being said, there was a concern that was brought to my attention that I had been asking for a while, and I thought it was important to come before the town council and express my concerns regarding what I consider not a appropriate way in which we in the town of Groton present our referendum questions to our diverse population here in Groton. I did a little research first, like always, called over to the city of New London, checked on their voter poll cards. They offer a bilingual card to everybody that walks through their door. After doing some research, I heard from the clerk over there, and they stated that it was based on the population, and I guess somehow they're designated to be required to provide that. I also reached out to other towns that maybe did not meet that number, but might have pockets in this community where different languages, like in Norwich, they have a large Cantonese population, or in certain sections, it might not be district-wide, but it might be designated to a particular district, where a population of individuals that have the right to vote, but aren't giving their full right and the ability to understand the referendum questions. I understand that at every election, there may not be a referendum question on there. And after speaking to some of my friends, who I'm proud to say are friends in this community, that I went to high school and graduated with, that moved here and are legal citizens that earned their right to vote, if you understand language, even the English language, one will remember that when you learn a new language, even my own children, they will say a bunch of words, but the reading and writing and the comprehension come much later. And I was approached by an individual that I respect in this community, and she said, wow, those referendum questions were really tough for me, and I was shocked that there was not an option in any other language in this town. I live in District 2, which does have a large Spanish-speaking population, and I was watching voter after voter come in, and watching and remembering, when I was a child here, that we still had school when we voted, they just closed and made a half-day. But I was very thankful that we did close schools in this town, because a lot of 12, 13, and 15-year-old students, even some younger than that, were having to translate these ballots to their parents, even in the sense where, you know, the parents could communicate with you in proper English, but once again, when you start speaking in old English, and I had to read the referendum question several times, if I wasn't involved politically, I would have had trouble. I had my own son read the questions at home after I left there, and I said, Isaac, read these questions to me, and he says, what does any of this mean? So my concern is that we have people that are legally allowed to vote in this town that aren't given the option of translation in their own language, they can understand complex referendum questions. So I'm here today to encourage this town of Groton to make sure that every voter that can vote in this town has the right and the accessibility to complex questions like referendum questions that may come up, just like the referendum that's coming up next month in December.
You have one minute.
I'm concerned that we have people that possibly may be voting, and this is my opinion, I have no concrete evidence, that may be voting on a question that they're not even really understanding. Once again, there's a lot of options out there, you wouldn't have to buy a ballot for everybody, because it could be cost, it could be expensive, but we could have cards that would, we would know ahead of time what our referendum questions would be, and we could provide the translation needed, in a way that somebody of any other language could get help with these prior to. There also is computer databases where you can load in the referendum questions, you can have a headset available, like at the handicap stations, and you can push Cantonese, and it will translate for you. So once again, I'm here to represent my district, and to speak on behalf, not only as an RTM member, but as a voting citizen myself here, that we could improve and we can do better for our citizens who have the right to vote. Please come out for the upcoming city election, it's November 7th, it happens to be my birthday, and I'm already thinking about the next elections. I hope that the voters start to come out for the upcoming city election, and I believe it's in May, and then we have our next election in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that did not sign up that wish to speak? Okay, we have responses to citizens' petitions.
Just simple, I think it's a good idea, and I'd like to see us give it a try.
Well, we had, what I noticed, I printed some ballots for my students at school that happened to live in New London, and what they do on theirs, rather than printing a whole separate ballot, is they have the offices just in English, because those are pretty basic words that most people would be able to grasp, but the ballot questions, they have the full text of the question in English, and directly below it, they have it right in Spanish, right on one ballot. So you're not printing multiple ballots, you're just printing one ballot that happens to have the ballot questions in two languages. And I think that would be a good place to start, would be to do English-Spanish.
I agree with you, I think the ballot should have the questions in both languages, Spanish and English. Spanish seems to be the predominant language of immigrants, however, we have a lot of people from Pakistan and from India, and I've had a client from in-town from Bosnia, who had a major problem taking a driver's license examination, because Connecticut doesn't offer the test in Bosnian. In any case, I think Portia's suggesting that there be a computerized station at one end, that people who use other languages could go to and dial in their own language, and have the referendum explained to them.
Perhaps that's something the registrars could take a look at. Madam Clerk.
Just to let you know this, there is a formula of percentage of population that the state mandates this type of literature, although there should have been, and I believe that the, it was ordered, Spanish explanatory text, English and Spanish, I know that it was ordered, because I saw the ballot orders. So what happened with the ballot order, I don't know, you know, lots of things happened at this election that was unforeseen, so, but well-taken, and I'll pass it on to the registrars.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to item number seven, consent calendar. Councillor Baumgartner.
So be it resolved that the minutes of the town council special meeting of September 25th, 2018, town council meeting of October 2nd, 2018, and town council special meetings on October 9th, 2018, and October 23rd, 2018, are hereby accepted and approved.
Excuse me, please don't second. We usually just move the consent calendar in one, so if you can just make one motion to move the consent calendar, or do we need to break out the tax refund? No, we can just move it all as one, please. Just make a motion to accept the consent calendar?
Yes. Just make a consent. Oh, I'm sorry. So, yes, approved, so I make a motion to approve the consent calendar, so moved.
Moved by Baumgartner, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Advisor Perry. Is there any discussion on any of the items on the consent calendar? Anything on the minutes?
I have one item on the minutes.
Can you please tell us which set of minutes?
It was on page nine.
Okay.
It's the third paragraph from the bottom.
Page nine. Mr. Burt, that begins Mr. Burt stated?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Page nine, which set of minutes?
They're paginated as a packet, so if you just go to page nine in the packet. Okay. So this is the October 2nd minutes on item Roman numeral 4.2, second paragraph from the bottom of 4.2, that begins Mr. Burt stated, correct, Councillor Frank?
Right. And then on the fifth align, it says, he stated that if we to renovate, I believe he's supposed to say, we were to renovate.
Okay. Anyone else? There's quite a large number of pages here worth of minutes to go through, so I'll give you a minute to take a look if you haven't. Have a chance?
You can, you know, you can always, if it's just a typo or like omission, that's really not a correction to the minutes, and that can be done at any time. It's really the substance of the minutes that is important.
I just wanted to note that we have several donors that have given money to the Groton Utilities Assistance Program, the Rowing Club has given, so it's, thank you for your generosity. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of moving the consent calendar say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Okay, we are on to item eight, communications and reports. We will start at that end. Councillor Baumgartner, you get to go first. We haven't met in a while, so you probably have quite a bit.
So last week, I had the opportunity to meet with Paige Bronk, who is responsible for economic development here in the town. It was a very informative tour, got to take a look at the industrial park, where it's really just booming at the seams. A lot of different businesses are going in relating to the growth at Electric Boat, as well as a new brewery and a CrossFit Center, so just a lot of promising news there in terms of economic development, and certainly, you know, yesterday with the election, really happy to see so many folks in Groton, you know, turning out and exercising their vote, and especially young people getting involved for the first time, which is great, you know, considering that young people are, you know, really becoming one of the more important blocks in the community in terms of having a voice at the ballot box, which is, you know, different than in years past, so really looking forward to seeing what happens over the next few years, and, you know, hopefully keep that momentum going with, you know, good turnout, so.
Excellent. Councillor Parker.
Okay. All right. For the month of October, the Board of Ed Liaison Committee meeting, the, sorry, guys, Noank, can you still hear me? Okay. Noank Garden Tour, Coffee with a Councillor, Fall Festival, Martin Luther King Scholarship Dinner, Elks Offer the Sister of the Year, I volunteered at the Chili Cook-Off, which was well-attended and had a blast, so thank you Groton Senior Center for hosting that. Attended the CFECT Thriving Community Conversations at the Groton Public Library, and we attended the Retirement Party for Betty Ann, writer, the Groton Public Library Director that just recently retired, October 31st. I believe that's all.
Councillor Frank.
I went to the Jebus Smith House Tour. I attended the Public Economic Development Meeting here at the Annex, where they had citizens interactively working with them for some insight on what their thoughts are about Groton. They had a very nice turnout. Went on a tour of the transfer station. I received correspondence regarding the Noank Gardens from a citizen. I attended Economic Development Meeting, where they wanted to let you know that they're reaching out to local communities regarding discussing some of EBE's needs. We've had a couple beautification committee meetings, where we have a small group, but we are working on getting some things accomplished, starting to make some progress. I had a meeting with the Chief Azaro, and we had our election yesterday, and regarding the town referendum, it was defeated, and so our government will go on forward as our current form of government. That's that.
Thank you. Councillor Heath.
All right. I attended the tour of the transfer station, also attended the MLK dinner, forget the number of students, but it's the most they've ever awarded scholarships to, it was pretty amazing. I also attended the Elks event to honor the police officers, attended the Chili Cook-Off at the Senior Center, attended Betty Ann Writer's Retirement as well, that was a lot of fun. I attended a Conservation Committee meeting, where they were talking about plastics ordinances and different ideas to link up the open space properties, and then also received citizen correspondence on Noank Garden, and questions on the vote yes and no, which came to the town email address.
Councillor Obray.
Gee, I don't think I did much. It was all family the last week.
You attended the JLOS meeting?
Oh, yes, I did.
And the Thriving Community Meeting at the library.
They're going to catch me up. I did go to a very interesting meeting yesterday morning, or afternoon, whenever it was. The COG has a subcommittee that's working on, working with two advisors now, that is going to be helping Groton primarily with future planning, and it's just, well, when you go to the first meeting, it's a little overwhelming, because it's going to take in a lot of different things, it's going to be very, very good for Groton, and I think that we were able to do this because of the talent that our planner, John Reiner, has. I think that they felt that he could gather together what they wanted for their first time, of attempting to work on future planning for housing, businesses, commercial uses, and et cetera. It was a very, very good meeting, I look forward to the next one.
Great. Councillor Atwood.
I attended the transfer station tour. I went to the Children's First Groton Meeting yesterday, and they are with us this evening, welcome. Went to SCARA recycle meeting, went to the Liaison Committee meeting tonight before this meeting, and went to the Planning Department's open house at the Groton Chelsea Bank, or Chelsea Groton Bank, I'm not sure which is which, but any case.
Great. Councillor Schmidt.
I attended the Cable TV Committee meeting, and one of the problems is that not every one of the member towns has members coming to the meeting, so that we're not actually able to take any action, and Sean Greeley is working to have the bylaws changed, but we do need to get membership from the different towns to do this. Also, I met with John Reiner about the TIP program.
And Councillor Perry.
One of our constituents, Christine Wallin, reached out to me a couple of weeks ago. She had heard me decry the situation that we live with, where we appropriate money to departments, and then the departments don't spend the money on the item that the money was appropriated for. We had that experience with the Board of Education or the school, where they, we appropriated money for a study for lead in the schools, drinking water in the schools, and we had the same sort of problem with the police chief, who asked for money to tear down a wall separating the telephone receptionist and the dispatcher, so they could communicate directly. Neither of those projects were fulfilled, although the money was appropriated. She felt very strongly that we should be naming one or two councillors to each department to review the appropriations, and be sure that the money that we appropriate is used for the purpose that it was appropriated for. I think that we have to do something to be sure, that when we do take an action like that, and we place a burden on our taxpayers, that that money should be for a good purpose, and not only should it be a good purpose, but it should be spent for that purpose, and not tucked away for something else. I would urge every citizen in Groton to contact not only me, but every member on this council, to express their feelings about our being more careful about the spending of money, and the spiraling upward turn of taxes in the town.
Let me take my turn. Then you can reply. Go ahead, you can reply now. Yes.
If I might.
Well, Mr. Burt wanted to go first.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're right ahead. Probably going to say the same thing.
Just mentioned, because of those concerns, we did start doing the monthly reports to the council for the amounts in each CIPs, you can see the progress or lack thereof, and in terms of liaisons to departments, the charter wouldn't allow for that, but.
Are you good, Janice?
Well, I was just going to say, I think we actually have a pretty good checks and balances in place. When the money is appropriated, it doesn't go to that department, it goes to our finance department. In order for them to be able to draw that money out, it has to be done in an appropriate way, they can't just take the money and spend it where they want to spend it. So I understand your concern, and I hear what you're saying, but I think that we have people that are monitoring our requests for money very closely, and you can't just use money for whatever you'd like to use it for.
Thank you, Councillor Obray. As far as communications, I attended many of the same things that the other councillors did, including the tour of the Jebus Smith House, and thanked the gentleman that met us there and showed us around, and talked a little bit about their maintenance needs, and that was forwarded to Mr. Burt, so he could share it with the Public Works Department to see what has been taken care of and what is still outstanding. I attended a Groton Economic Development Strategy Work Session here, it was interesting, the public was invited in, and we did some group work on that, the Chili Cook-Off, Safe Futures Walk, where two police officers representing the town were present. That was very nice, it was a nice fundraiser for, Safe Futures was formerly the Women's Shelter. I was honored to present a proclamation to the chief selectees of the Navy, and I'm not sure if we talked about this before or not, they did a lot of work for the town up at the Nautilus Overlook and at Quantic Plains Park, and they do service projects, and they chose to help out the town of Groton with these two projects that they did, and it was quite remarkable. There are a lot of photographs online, if you wanted to take a look at all the work that they did, and Councillor Franco attended as well. I met with Mayor Hedrick, the Martin Luther King Scholarship Dinner, I also toured the Noank Garden, and it was nice, we took a look around what's there, we also took a look at the parcel that we were selling, potentially selling to the gentleman to make up his little chunk of property for his garage, and the transfer station tour as well, and I think that's it. Lots of communications about election issues from many people, and again, to second what Councillor Baumgartner said, it was quite dramatic, the turnout, that, much bigger than we normally have for local elections, but it was still only around 50%, correct?
No, I don't have the breakdown in that regard, but I would say you're probably right. I know that for our office, we had over 1,000 absentee ballots processed, which is pretty incredible for, like you said, for midterm election.
Right, and that's still, we're normally below 30% for local elections, and this was much higher, shockingly higher to us, but it's kind of appalling when you think about only 50% of the people turn out to vote, so. Vote next time, people. Okay. Clerk of the representative town meeting.
Thank you. The representative town meeting did meet in October, October 10th, and they elected a, well, the representatives from the first district had a caucus, and they elected Wilmer Lambert, he filled vacancy. There's, the next meeting will be November 14th, they have several items on their agenda, and there are still two vacancies, one in District 1 and one in District 7, those are both for Democratic registered candidates. Anyone interested, please contact me. And as far as the council report, I have an enormous amount of information, I'm feeding to you when I can, as far as explanatory text, and this referendum that we are having on the 11th of December.
Thank you.
And thank you, Councillor Franco, for pointing out the question.
You're welcome. Town manager.
A lot of different meetings, I went to the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, Annual Conference at Foxwoods, as well as Councillor Parker. Went to Betty Ann's Retirement, had a meeting with, Mayor Hedrick had a meeting with Electric Boat, with Maura Dunn, the VP of Human Resources, to get various updates from her. Went to, me, Councillor Baumgartner, and John Reiner, and Paige Bronk went to a presentation by Eversource and Orsted on their bidding on the Wind Project in New London, so we got an update on that. Went to the RTM Rules Committee to discuss the ethics ordinance, went to the Economic Development Commission meeting, and then I just want to say thank you to Eversource, we had an issue with construction going on in Ocean View by S.B. Butler, that we had many complaints on in the morning, and they were kind enough to wrap up their day early and vacate and open the street up, so that was kind of them. Other than that, you get a regular report of projects I'm working on, so if you have any questions on those.
Great, thank you. 8.5, I believe Dr. Grenier is with us this evening to give us an update. Hello.
Good evening. So I thought I'd just give a couple of updates on some issues that are occurring in the schools. The first one, I was actually asked, I knew we got a little bit of an update on the air quality issues at Northeast Academy, but just to summarize and then give you an update on what's happening currently, we asked, we knew there were some concerns at Northeast Academy regarding air quality, so we asked Mystic Air Quality Consultants to come in. They did an inspection, they did find evidence of mold in one closet, but they noted that there was no toxic mold, or so-called black mold, and they also recommended that we hire an engineering firm, which we have done. Engineering firm actually came in last Thursday, began their study, they're first going to look at the site, the physical location of the building, makes you sure that the water and so forth is draining away from the building, and they're looking at our heating and ventilation system. We anticipate it'll take about three months for them to complete the full study, and we'll continue, keep the school community updated as we go. The second thing is, a couple of big things about Groton 2020, we have appointed a committee to take a look, there are two new elementary schools that will be coming online, one at the Cutler Site and one at West Side, and both of those will be magnet schools, and so we have committees that are going to pick the themes for those magnet schools. We've hired, in conjunction with Lorenz, someone to help us with that process, and so we're moving forward with that, and the other thing with Groton 2020 is, of course, we're, the architects are making some really significant progress on the new middle school, so per board policy, we've appointed a committee to help name that school. Couple of students, parents, town historian, Jim Streeter will be on the committee, so we hope by the end of the month to have a recommendation to the board. The third thing is about water quality, that we've spoken about before, we continue to work with the State Health Department and Ledge Light Health District, and they've made a couple of right- and they've made a couple of recommendations, mostly to remove and replace fixtures in three locations. One, one location, a fountain in Colchester School, one area, the fieldhouse on the field, and one fountain in the business wing. So, we're just, we're continuing to do that work in-house, and then they've asked us to retest those areas, and we'll do that. And the last thing is a really special, on Friday, this Friday, at 10:20, there's going to be a very special Veterans Day ceremony that I think, if any of you could come, we'd be honored to have you there. In 1981, a young man named William Hart graduated from Fitch High School, and I received a phone call last year, and I did not know this, but Mr. Hart then joined the Marine Corps, was stationed in Beirut, Lebanon, and as you may recall, in 1983, there was a huge terrorist attack. 242 Marines were killed in the barracks in Beirut. And William Hart, Sergeant William Hart, was one of those. So, we started with just that one bit of information, he's actually buried in New London, and we started branching out with some really remarkable success. We found family members here in the community, we found friends of his, in fact, his best friend is a custodian at one of our schools. And so, we have gotten a plaque, we're going to mount a plaque in his honor, actually right next to the one for William Sealy, who was the first member of the Groton community, who was killed in World War II on the Arizona at Pearl Harbor. So, 10:20 at the high school, some students have done research on this event in 1983, and there will be some speakers, perhaps even some of his family's members will speak. And then there will be a Veterans Day lunch. So, if you can, if you can make it, we'd be delighted to have you attend.
Is that the 9th?
The 9th, Friday the 9th, yes. And that's my update.
Thank you very much. While Dr. Grenier is here, does anyone have questions? Counselor O'Bree and then Franco.
I'll let Franco go first.
Franco and then O'Bree.
Okay. I've been contacted by some people at the Northeast Academy, and I'm glad you're following up on these issues. It has been in the public very prominently recently regarding how Groton has maintained their schools historically. So, this is of the utmost importance that this is taken care of swiftly and properly. So, I have a few questions about Northeast Academy. I heard that OSHA had gone in, and do you have that report?
Right, no violations.
There was no violations from OSHA? You have a letter from them stating that everything was good?
I have an oral report, I don't have the letter yet, but I can find out.
Do we have leaks in the roof there?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Because I think maybe you should check to see if there are actual leaks in the roof.
Well, we do, as you can imagine, we do lots of checking at all our schools.
Right, I just know that there was a parent night, and there were garbage cans stationed in the hallway from leaks coming from the roof. So, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that and that...
Yeah, that's entirely possible.
Okay, and that maybe that might contribute to some of the issues?
I'm sure it does.
Okay, and as I read through the reports, there was humidity issues there, and I was wondering, are you going to be checking any other schools for possible humidity issues as well?
We, we have devices, the HVAC system is actually controlled by a computer program, and so we have an HVAC mechanic, and that's his job. He does it every day. We know of the, more than, this summer was, was really pretty horrendous. And so, the humidity problem at Northeast Academy really rose to the surface. I'm not aware of any others, but I'll talk to the technician, but I can assure you, yeah, we check every day.
So, with the water quality issues, I mean, this has been going on for quite some time. Do you know how quickly you're going to be able to wrap this up?
The, the in-house staff is working on this as we speak. So, yeah, I'll report next month, but I would imagine it wouldn't take very long.
Yeah, because I mean, if we're just down to these few, like, issues, I think that we could just do the work.
Yeah, it's literally three fixtures.
Instead of constantly testing over and over again, I would just assume that we would be just changing out the fixtures and just trying to repair it.
Yeah, we're basically working with the Health Department, and so every time, every time we follow their recommendation, their recommendation almost always ends with, and we want you to continue to monitor, so that's what we do.
Right, I was just hoping that we could just try and fix it quickly and then monitor and see how we are there.
Yes, I agree.
And one more question regarding the 2020 project. Can you explain why it is more cost-effective to build new than to renovate?
It's more cost-effective to build new. I just had a, as Mr. Atwater knows, I just had a fairly long conversation. Let me start by saying that the, the cost of the two, of the three schools will be $184.5 million, and the cost of the two elementary schools are about $45 million each. So, the, the cost remains the same. I think that's sort of the simple way to put it. And when, when we, when the architects went to the state, they had to prove to the state that it would be, it would be, I don't want to say less costly, because they're both going to be $45 million, but the amount of building that we would get with a new building, because we wouldn't have to go through all the renovation and take out the PCBs and so forth, would be much more cost-effective in that way. So, the $45 million building, which is new, would come with new pipes, new wiring, new everything. And the other, I guess the other, from a consumer's point of view, the thing I could say is that the renovated building comes with a 25-year warranty. The new building comes with a 45-year warranty. So, for, for the same price, 45 million, about half of which is going to be paid for by the state, for the same price, we would get a building that's nearly twice the warranty. So, it's more cost-effective, it's more, we get more value for our money, basically. But thank you for asking.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
It's like, we have a lot of old housing stock in New England, and if you have an old house, trying to retrofit an old house versus building, building new, so you can look at it that way.
That's exactly it, and you don't want to hear me get into the details.
Oh, we do, but maybe not right now. Counselor O'Bree?
I was just wondering, who brought this problem to your attention?
Which problem? He doesn't know what you're pointing at.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at your report on the Northeast Academy, the fact that there was mold and mild, possible mold and mildew issues.
Well, the principal did.
Okay. And I had a few calls, and I was told that there was, in fact, a leaking roof. And I wonder how there could possibly be a leaking roof, and you would not be aware of it.
Well, roofs, all roofs, at least any roof I've ever been associated with in a school district, if the wind blows the wrong direction, there will be some leakage. And, and of course, it's an ongoing process for the Maintenance Department that they search out these things. There, it happens after an extraordinary amount of rain, and then when it stops, we go up on the, they go up on the roof and apply material to try to stop the leak. But, yeah, I mean, it happens, but it happens on, I would say, virtually all public buildings.
Really?
Well...
I don't want to live in your house, then.
Yeah, no, I didn't say my house.
You didn't say his house, you said a public one.
But on public buildings, there's something about, well, maybe I shouldn't say all, but many schools that I've been associated with, from time to time, will have, will have leaks. Some of them are structural, and we repair those, and some of them are, you know, sort of wind-induced.
What, if you're in a hallway with this bucket salt and it's catching water...
Right.
Whose responsibility does that become? I mean, like, I'm sure that this, whoever's the principal makes a call.
To the, yeah, to the Maintenance Department.
Okay, and I'm just very distressed by the fact that there would be water dripping into any school. I don't think it's necessary. I know they have flat roofs, and flat roofs create more problems, but I also know you can tar and you can seal on a regular basis so that you don't have water leaks. And, you know, it might very well be some of the reason that you're now in there checking for mold. And I have to say that there's been several different things that we've talked about that I have to question how good your Maintenance Department really is. And I'm really reluctant to say it, because I think the world of you in your group, but it seems like there seems to be a weakness in your maintenance, and I really think that you've got to step it up.
Thank you.
Like you said, I am reluctant to say it because I think you do a very good job with so many, many things, and I don't think necessarily this is your responsibility. You have somebody that's supposed to be doing it so you don't have to worry about it. But you're the one that comes to sit in front of us.
Yeah, and I take that responsibility, and I will follow up, I assure you. And I'm distressed by it as well.
Well, I'd really like to, I'd really like to have more communication about it, because I don't really want this to go away. I want to know what the answer is.
Right.
I want to know what we're doing routinely to know what kind of condition our roofs are in. And as you said, I think you have to step up really big time, your Maintenance Department.
Okay.
So, I wanted to say something. So, my question is not so much with the leaking roof, but I've had people concerned about Northeast Academy that grew up in the area, and they were concerned that there is, that property has always been wet with streams and everything, and their concern was that when the building was planned, that it was not planned properly, and therefore you have a lot of the water, not necessarily from a roof that's leaking, but you just have this constant problem with the water table there. And we can't do anything about that now but fix it. But for future planning, I think we need to be very aware of these types of issues when, you know, look at the site that we're going to be building on and make sure we account for that as we are building it. So, I guess that's to the Permanent School Building Committee, to make sure that our contractors are aware of all these things, and that they do the necessary things and make this a lesson learned for our new buildings, because they are new buildings. These two are, these two are new. And I think a lot of us are surprised that we're already having issues with the buildings. So, perhaps communication was the issue between the people that are in the building and central office. Maybe they're not communicating properly with Dr. Grenier. We don't know at this point, so we just know we need to, we need to fix the problem.
We've talked about it, but I'll reinforce that with the architects.
Thank you.
We certainly want to be sure we have a proper site.
And then you'll come back and talk with us?
Who was that?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Was there anybody else who wants to speak first time? If not, we'll go back to Counselor Franco. Go ahead.
As the school is semi-new, you had just mentioned warranties on a new building. Are there any warranties that can take care of any of these issues?
Well, I didn't...
Like, possibly a leaking roof?
I didn't mean literally a warranty. Under the state guidance of Department of Administrative Services, a renovated building is expected to last for 25 years. And the renovations that you do, the town is informed, should last for 25 years, and for new buildings, they would anticipate 45 years.
But is there any kind of warranty possibly on any of these things?
There are warranties, roofs typically come with a 20-year warranty, and we do, we do go back to, if, if in fact that's the case. But I know, I know Mayor Granatowski, what she said is true. That's why they're starting with the site. There may be some, I'm not aware of the leaking roof, but we believe there, well, obviously it's a wet place, and this summer we got a ton of rain, and we got a ton of humidity. And if inside the building, we obviously want to control the humidity, keep it to under 60%, 60%. Mold cannot grow at under 60% humidity. And that's been an ongoing problem for us, particularly this summer. Once the heat comes on, it tends to burn away the moisture. But, yeah, this is, this is a real problem, and we're going to, we're going to have to take a look at maybe an industrial dehumidifier for a building like that. I don't know, but we're committed to making it, you know, safe and, safe and healthy, and we don't want mold, and we don't have humidity and mildew and all that sort of stuff. It's just not healthy.
Counselor Heaton?
I've worked at a few hotels in Washington DC where you have flat roofs, and, you know, they spend $150,000 to redo the roof, and a week later it rains and the roof leaks, and you have a bunch of rooms flooded.
Yes.
And so, it always boggles my mind that we build buildings with flat roofs, but I know you also put air conditioners and other equipment up there, but with the new schools that we're designing, are we looking into, I know one of the rooms that they were talking about had a roof that was either going to be round or at least, whatever this is called, you know, not flat.
Hip roof?
I don't want to, I don't want to speak too authoritatively. I know there are, I'm quite sure there are some roofs, but the new, the new regulation from the state, there has to be a pitch. In some cases, it's a series of, so it sort of looks like a flat roof, but there are pitches and there are little gullies that carry the water off. But, yeah, I'm not an engineer, but the whole idea of a flat roof, especially with snow and everything, it never, never really made a whole lot of sense to me, but some of the buildings, at least the one that I've seen, the middle school, some portions of the building, I do believe, have a pitch roof, and some have a flat roof. And you're right, we put the equipment up, they put the equipment up there. And it's very frustrating, or as Counselor O'Bree would say, distressing, when these darn things leak.
Any other counselors have a question? Okay, is there anything more from each other? No, okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Grenier.
You're welcome.
We'll look forward to hearing back from you on these issues.
Great, okay.
All right, committee reports. Committee, the whole, we've been meeting. Personnel appointments, Chairman Heaton?
The, no, it was canceled.
Thank you. Temporary rules?
No meeting.
Regular rules?
No meeting.
And nothing for public safety. New business. Counselor Parker, we with, oh, no, we have Children First that are going to talk to us this evening. So, you have a handout? Please come on up. We have a, two handouts, actually, from Children First Groton. You have a note sheet from the PowerPoint, and then you also have a packet on the School Readiness Committee, and this is School Readiness Preschool Program. This is the group that Counselor Atwater attends on behalf of the rest of us. So, if you could just state your names for us, please, and what your position is, we need you to use the mic, that way it's captured for the videotape. Thank you.
You mind if I ask the same way, and everybody introduces themselves in their council?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm Kevin Trejo, Chair of the School Readiness Council.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Linda Allen. I am the School Readiness Liaison, and I work at Learn.
Sue Radway, I'm Director of Riverfront Children's Center. We are one of the Groton, New London School Readiness funded sites and a member of the School Readiness Council.
Thank you.
You took what I was going to say away, but that's okay. I just want to thank Madam Mayor, the members of the council, Town Manager, and Madam Clerk for having us here and giving us this chance for this presentation. And I'm basically going to keep quiet, and I'm going to let these wonderful ladies give you a slight presentation, small presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Trejo.
So, yes, thank you very much for having us here. We wanted to just give you a brief overview of the School Readiness Preschool Program that we have here in Groton. And part of that is because in the springtime there, the state, the Office of Early Childhood will be putting out an RFP for the grantee, which is the Board of Education, and then for the sub-grantees. And in preparing for that, we wanted to give you some information because part of the structure of the School Readiness because part of the structure of the School Readiness Program from the Office of Early Childhood is that the mayor, the town mayor and the superintendent of the, of schools are responsible, are co-responsible for the execution, for the RFP and for the monitoring and oversight of the School Readiness Program. So in preparation for that, that will come out in the springtime, we wanted to give you some information sooner rather than later so that as things come up or if you have questions, there's time to be able to address that over the next few months so that you're not getting everything all at once for the first time. So the first handout that I'm sort of going to go over a little bit with you is the one that says it's, is the overview. And then Sue will do the PowerPoint with you. So I just wanted to point out a few key pieces on there. And again, if you have more questions or if something comes up at a later date, you're more than welcome to get in touch with me and I'll do my best to get you the answer that you, or the information you're looking for. So the School Readiness Program is through the Office of Early Childhood and it is a state-funded initiative. And it's been around since 1997. And there are 10 objectives, but the first one is really the one I wanted to point out. And it's to provide open access for children for high-quality preschool programs to promote health and safety and to prepare them for school. So if you look down, it gives an overview. And then on the first page it has Priority District and on the second page it talks about the Competitive Grant. Groton is considered a competitive municipality. So that's, that's where we fall, where Groton falls. There are some differences in the amount of money and different things if you're a Priority District, which I'll, will go to at the end. So the eligibility is for children who are ages three, four and five, who are not eligible to enroll in kindergarten. And at least 60% of the children must, enrolled must be at or below 75% of the state median income.
Could you repeat that, please? 60% of the children must be at or below?
The 75% of the state median income.
Okay, so it's an income-based placement?
Yes. There is no upper cap, but there is, there is a stipulation as to how many children need to fall under that, that level. So in, in Groton, there are two programs. There are two community programs. And between the two programs, there's Riverfront and then there's the Early Childhood Development Center, which is part of the Child and Family Agency. And there are a total of 53 full-day, full-year slots between the two programs. And there are five school-day, school-year slots, which are at Riverfront. And next to those, it gives you how much money the town, the Office of Early Childhood gives per year for those. And then all, all the programs have to charge a sliding fee scale. I'm in a sliding scale fee, sorry about that. And some of them, they also do care for kids. So that, there is a scale that is actually being reworked from the Office of Early Childhood and they will be putting out a new, updated version. But there is something on their site that has the sliding fee scale. And as David, Councilor Atwater, no, sorry, announced earlier, he comes to the council meeting. So part of the structure of the School Readiness Program is that there is a School Readiness Council. So there is somebody who comes from the mayor's office and somebody who comes from the superintendent's office that, that serve on the council. And then there are also other members that are to be on the council as well. So and as I said earlier, what will happen in the, the Office of Early Childhood is hoping to have the RFP out by, probably in January. We will then put together a timeline of a bidder's conference that the programs will need to come to. There will be both a local RFP, which is done by the sub-grantees. And then there's a community RFP, which I, as in the role of the liaison, will do with the School Readiness Council. And those will then be, once they're authored and approved by the council, then I will be seeking the, the signatures of both the superintendent and the mayor. The quality components are, that's on one of your pages, is going to be what's going to be highlighted in the PowerPoint that Sue is going to do. So I'm going to skip that part of it. And I just wanted to go to the grant awards. It gives what all of the communities in the state of Connecticut are given. I just wanted to look down where it says competitive. It, where it has Groton and it says 509-380. That actually is, is lower than what we actually received. So what happened in the springtime is that there were some slots that were available to, that were unused in other communities. And so we were given an opportunity to vie for some of those slots. So the, so I put in a request on behalf of the program that was interested in having that, which was the Early Childhood Development Program Center. And we were awarded two more slots, so two more full-day, full-year slots. So the number that's on there, the 509, is just, does not represent those other two slots. They haven't updated this since the springtime when they awarded that. So I just wanted to make that note. The other part is the qual-
Excuse me, one second. There was a question, please?
You need to be right right now. I was just wondering, how do children, how are children identified to participate? Like, do they have to apply or is it just you take 100 people, this pays for 50?
Do you want to?
Yeah, I can talk about that. So in Riverfront, we have 50, no, 62 preschool slots and we have 54 funded slots between Groton and New London children for School Readiness. And so all but eight of our children are enrolled in one or the other School Readiness Slots. We do do it by the greatest amount of need. But given that 95% of the children that attend Riverfront receives some, the families receive some kind of tuition subsidy, that's pretty much all of the children. And we look for some other scholarships for those that we don't have enough School Readiness Slots for. We could use them. But because of that 60% category, if there is somebody with a higher income and we filled all of the slots with, you know, we still have a slot left, we'll, we'll use it for someone that has a slightly higher income. The point that I took this piece of paper, the page that talks about program types reimburses $8,924 per child. But in fact, our cost of care for one child that's a preschooler is closer to $10,000. So even if we were to give this, so then that sliding scale, scale fee, some of those parents are paying us $0 if they're going to school or $8 or $15 or, you know, $25 a week. It doesn't add up to the difference of what that reimbursement is. So we actually, somebody that's more, closer to able to pay the $100 or so would be better able to have us meet our bills.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I wanted to go back for just a minute. It, under your eligibility, it says children who are age three and four and children five years of age who are not eligible to enroll in kindergarten may enroll in a School Readiness Program. How do you determine that?
It is a weird statement, written statement. We are not allowed to keep children that will be five by December 31st. They must go to kindergarten. Or if the parent chooses to not send them to kindergarten, we cannot enroll them in a School Readiness Slot. So if they're the age appropriate to go to kindergarten, they go to kindergarten. And by not eligible would mean there'd need to be a discussion between the school district and the, the family in an agreement that there was no other program or services available within the school system for that child, for them to truly start kindergarten. I don't know of any instance where that has happened.
Is there some kind of level of ability that you have to have to go into kindergarten?
No, it's about your birth date.
Right.
Services have to be provided to meet your individualized needs. So children at the center that come to us at age three, we haven't seen them earlier, maybe haven't been in any kind of a program, may not have been identified with any kind of developmental delays, but we may observe that and call the school system to come in and do an observation and then assessment and determine whether or not the delay can be addressed at the center or whether they need to come to one of the preschool programs that are based within the school system. And then they be identified with an individual education plan, et cetera, and be in the school system and continue on even, you know, at three and four and then into kindergarten. So it's pretty, I don't know of any instances where a child is kindergarten age and is kept back and kept in a School Readiness Program.
I just wanted to add that one of the stipulations for the School Readiness Funds is that a child can't do more than two years in a School Readiness Slot. So if they come in at age three and then they're age four, then they can't stay in that slot at age five as well.
Well, at age five, then they have to go to kindergarten, correct?
Yes, and we use the, the state cutoff for the birth dates, which is January 1st.
So pretty much all the children that you're caring for are involved in this program?
Minus eight because we don't have eight additional slots. And actually, we have 26 funded Groton School Readiness Slots. So there are 26 Groton children. I can tell you that we also have 28 New London Slots. We don't have 28 New London children. So some Groton children are receiving School Readiness Funding through the New London-funded Slots. And that's allowable by policy that as of September 1st, if you haven't filled a slot and you have it available and have no more children that you've been able to find in your community, for those dollars you can give them to a family that resides in another community. That's never an issue with our Groton children because we're located in Groton.
I'm just trying to understand this a little bit more than, I've not, you know, really paid my, had any experience with this. I know it used to be that children had to do certain things at certain levels in order to go into kindergarten or go forward. Is that what, you're kind of, are you preparing them?
We certainly are preparing them to be successful learners in school. And we do do assessments and we provide transition information to the kindergarten teachers, to the schools district, for them to be able to look ahead at the skill levels of the children that are entering. But I do not believe that, Dr. Grenier's not here? Is he gone?
Yes.
I do not believe the school, the school system cannot place a requirement of a child not prepared to enter kindergarten. You take kindergarten because they're age-ready.
So like if somebody never went to a daycare, they stayed at home, they're gonna be able to go in the kindergarten?
There's a distinct difference. And that, that was one of the reasons why School Readiness Funding was started in the 90s with the number of children that were not seeing a preschool experience in any way. And then at that, around that period of time as well, the requirements of a, what used to be called daycare and we refer to as childcare and now refer to as early care and education has a learning, educational component to it so children have the skills they need to start kindergarten. Very different than the very, very, you know, 60, 70, 80's daycare babysitting kind of program for parents that were working.
We have, Council Parker has a question. Then we need to let them finish because I'm wondering if what they're gonna present would answer a lot of these questions.
Probably. My question is, so if families are interested, do they come to you guys with the application? I believe that what Council Heath was trying to get to. Do they have to submit an application to you?
They do not. So the funding is for slots and they go to any Groton families that come in. We have a waiting list and we, and we take them in the order in which they call or based on greatest need. There's a couple of factors that fall in there. Preschool in general, we have enough slots. The first person in gets the first Groton School Readiness Slot until they're all filled up. After that, we find other subsidies to-
So no application? They can call if there's any slots that are available at?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
There, there is. When they are interested, they come in and would visit, do an enrollment packet and those kinds of things. It's not necessarily an application, but they'd get all the information that they need upon enrollment. And then if the family chooses to use the program and if they're eligible, then they, then they would go into a-
For families, it's about what their tuition is going to be. So here's my income, what am I gonna have to pay? And we'll say, well, we have some funding, state funding for some slots and it will pay this. And it says, the scale says your fee will be this. And it's either affordable or not affordable for them. We negotiate them.
We want to continue with questions now. I don't know who was first, I'm sorry.
Rita's first.
I just wanted to clarify, are there young children from New London who come into this program in Groton?
So Riverfront Children's Center is a regional early care and education center serving children from nine communities in southeastern Connecticut. There's 120 children, about half of them are Groton children. Another third of them are New London children and the rest are here, there and whatever. So families are working, the majority of families are low and moderate income working in service, healthcare and manufacturing jobs. And so they're coming into the community because they work here, they live in New London, but they're coming through here or driving through here. Or we provide the greatest flexibility of sliding scale fee of any center in the area. So we are affordable.
And is the transportation supplied by the granting? Or is this something the parents have to supply?
Parents provide transportation.
Councilor Sipery.
What can we do to help you?
Watch the presentation.
Sign the grant application?
Well, one that you're signing, you are signing the application. With School Readiness, it's just more so supporting it with the means. If you want to help with Children's First, that'd be a different thing. We can submit an application for funds and things like that, similar on those areas when it comes to budget time. If you want to help or get, be involved with like a scholarship or a grant or something of that nature to help it. But now with the School Readiness, basically just supporting us, signing the application is what we need to have done so we can do the process with the state.
I'd also be hap-
And clarification on Councilor Schmidt's. We have 58 seats. We give all those seats to Groton children. If for some reason we couldn't fill all 58 seats with Groton children, we can go out to other towns. But the 58 seats are all addressed to, to Groton children.
Thank you.
Top priority. I could keep you updated with some written updates. The greatest thing that could happen would be the support for lobbying in Hartford as issues related to early childhood come about. Some things have to do with, there's other, there's also another level of funding from the state called Child Daycare Dollars Funding. And those also may be some preschool slots. For us, we only have infant and toddler slots, but the pay rate per child is different than the School Readiness Spots. And they're looking at trying to make some equity and also trying to increase the dollars that go into these programs so that that cost of care of $8,900 that doesn't cover cost of care would actually cover cost of care. So it's about how do we make a budget move in the direction that supports more for early childhood, which are beginning early learners. That's really our greatest need.
Years ago, long before 1997, we had a Head Start program.
There still is one.
So this is, this is different from the Head Start program?
Head Start is total federal dollars. School Readiness is state dollars. A combination.
And is there a Head Start program going in Groton?
There are Head Start little learners down in-
It is Central Avenue?
That's right.
36 Central.
Central Avenue. So Head Start has a component of wraparound services in there where they have some additional staff and supports for families. So they have a greater reimbursement rate that looks at families with the greatest amount of need. If there's parent education, there's an additional family support specialist in the classroom to help with the ratios and the, and the challenges that might be there with children's behaviors. I believe they have a nutritionist on site. There's a number of things that we can't afford at our center.
The eligibility for Head Start is very strict. The last I knew of, a few years ago, if you had a family of four to be eligible for Head Start, you couldn't make more than $25,000 a year. So Head Start gets a lot of money, a lot of federal money because you've got families that are really impoverished. that are really impoverished, or really struggling financially.
Okay. So, do you want to continue with your presentation?
One, one other piece of the financial, the other one talks about the QE Grant Awards. Again, for Groton, because it's a competitive municipality, we get $3,881. So with that, the council has areas that we try to support and fund with those, with those dollars. And so in the past, it's been things such as early childhood educators who have gone on to get advanced degrees, so they, we help pay for some of their schooling. We're also trying to help support programs who might want to do some professional development, that they might be able to use some funds to be able to afford to bring in a presenter for their staff, to be able to, to get information about topics and things that are of interest or of need. So I just wanted to point that out, those are, it's not a whole lot of money, but we do try to, the council tries, tries really hard to address some of the, the needs of, of the, of the early childhood profession.
I just have a quick question. When you're saying competitive municipalities, because they need to compete for the funding, is that where the word competitive comes from?
No.
It's a term that was used to define the, in the average income socioeconomic background of a community, New London versus Groton. There's nothing competitive about this particular bid. We are school readiness sites, we have those, they're not taken away as long as we continue to do reports and submit what's required. So competitive, as we write it every two years, we might not get it. No, it's not, yeah.
Thank you very much. All right, so we're on to the slideshow.
Yeah. So, the slides are not moving.
Hold on just a second.
On the board.
Is it frozen? Sean can help.
Help is coming.
Leanne, do you want to hum while we're waiting?
Hum? I'll sing.
I'll just ask a question.
That's better. Go ahead, Rita. I'm Councilor Schmidt, I'm sorry.
On the school readiness program, well, they're all very-
Okay.
Oops. Okay.
There we go. Okay. All right, so I'll do some, we've already, Children First Groton has been around for a good number of years, and, and the Groton School Readiness Council is part of that. We are one and the same, and we mentioned there's a variety of partners, both related to Children First Groton, as a broad committee in the community concerned for the well-being of children birth to eight, which is where the mission statement comes from. All Groton children, birth to age eight, healthy, safe, successful learners connected to strong families within a community that values diversity. So there are work groups within Children First Groton that work related to safety, education, and health, and work on things like prescription to read, providing board books in pediatricians' offices for when children come in for a well-child visit. They get a, they get a book to take home and a prescription from the pediatrician that says, "Read every day," just an important learning opportunity. You may have seen something like Groton Rocks around, or Groton Go, which was a passport of exploring the community and things for families to be doing together. Some of this Linda talked about, I just happen to enjoy pictures and think pictures are, provide a thousand words for you of what's happening here. So, children working together, they were, I think with the light, hard to see, they were together moving a log that they didn't like where it was on the playground and wanted to do something with it. So cooperation, working together, kindness is important. As Linda said, it's a two-year period. In terms of how this works, I'm thinking as I was listening here, so the, the mayor and the superintendent are responsible for assuring that this is implemented. The money comes to the superintendent. So that includes some money to oversee the implementation of the school readiness grant, and that's where Linda's paid from, through Learn, the school district, the public schools contract with Learn, to do the liaison oversight, budget-wise, et cetera, more cost-effective to do that. So that's where Linda's role comes in there, and then she facilitates this back and forth with the mayor and the superintendent's signatures. And the superintendent has a representative at the meeting every month to assure that the work is being done. And we provide reports that go through to them to look at as well. So there are some requirements that we need to meet as a school readiness site to assure that programs are high quality. Some of them are about learning, and some of them are about environment, and some of them are about, are about access. So as Linda said, there's a sliding fee scale. This is a puppet show, I think, put on by the Connecticut storytellers perhaps, or Hispanic council. And Hartford comes and does some things, this is at ECDC. So all families, no matter what your income level, have access to a quality program. We are required to collaborate and coordinate with a variety of entities within the community. Part of that is with that list early on, as part of the council, but also within the center, so that we can assure that our families and our children have access to as much opportunity as they can. That means we bring people like Dennis and Pequat Cipos and the Aquaria into the center, or we take a field trip to them. Buses are expensive, so if somebody comes to us, that's better. It means that we could have somebody come in and do some dance, or some music kinds of things that children aren't normally exposed to, so there's a variety of those kinds of things, as well as collaborations with dentists and, and mental health and physical health people, so we have consultants access when we have questions or families have questions. We are required to integrate children with disabilities into our programs, and that's where we link with birth to, to the public school system to come in and do those necessarily, necessary assessments. If something is identified, then the assessment is where's the best place for services to be provided, and that may mean, in some instances, we have children, that the school system picks them up in the morning. At the center, mom has to drop them off, because they go to work at seven, the bus picks them up at nine, returns them at 11:30, and then they spend the afternoon with us and mom gets him, them, at the end of their workday. Or it may mean that there's a PPT meeting, and it's held at the center with the school system and the center teachers, and it's determined that the work that the teachers are currently doing, particularly if it's language, and they're in a classroom with children that are, have typical developing language, then let's just keep promoting that, give the teachers some more strategies, and they stay in the center. But either way, the child is receiving the services in the least restrictive environment. We make those referrals to health services. We're required to have some attention to nutrition and health, so that's physical exercise and health, concerns about the obesity rates and related to children, and how do we address that? We, Riverfront are not a part of the federal school lunch program. We don't have the facilities to do that, but we do provide two nutritious snacks a day, that include milk and at least one other food group. This is a picture on the right of ECDC holds a friend giving dinner, or lunch with the kids and visitors. On the left, this is Yukon, that's a partnership collaboration for us, the students at Avery Point, Yukon Husky Reads, come in every year and do a reading program, which involves, obviously, literacy development, but it's about nutrition. So that happens every year for our preschoolers. We are required to have components of family involvement throughout the year, with families getting to know the other families that their children, families in their child's classroom, and to be doing things together, and to be active in the center. So we have a parent-teacher organization. We have gardens in the back, so the children help us get the gardens ready and plant and pick, and then cook what they've picked. And parents are also invited to just come in and spend time in the classroom. This was a mom that was reading to children outside in our patio on a nice day. Literacy is a big component. Literacy isn't just learning to write your name, although this is a child that was about ready to go to kindergarten last year, demonstrating that she really knew how to write her name and do her letters really well. But literacy is about increasing your vocabulary, so talking and doing and hearing different words. It's about knowing how to hold a book, and knowing what way to turn the pages in a book, and knowing that there's a story, the beginning and the end. Literacy is about talking, and sometimes children only hear talking through their electronics, and not so much conversation. So if you come to this center, you hear talking all day long. It's very important that we have a transition program to kindergarten, so the kindergarten teachers know who's coming, so we know that what we're teaching in, in Riverfront and at ECDC are helping the children truly be prepared for what the teachers are expecting when they enter kindergarten. So we do some work with children. In this particular instance, this classroom, you have to be able to walk quietly in halls when you're in the public schools, and you have to be able to line up and go to cafeteria to have your lunch. Well, we line up and we go outside. It's not always kind of so quiet doing that, but as you get older, they work really hard at it. So in this case, to practice that, you catch a bubble. So if you see kids walking down the hall like that, it's like they know their mouth is supposed to be quiet, and how long can I keep my mouth like this? And how, how fast can I walk while still walking and staying in line and get out the door? So that, stay in line, be quiet, follow directions is important for the school. And we are an extremely diverse center, and that is, again, the expectation of New London School Readiness, that the program is open to everyone to go out and school. What did I say? Did I say New Lon, I'm sorry. In this particular instance, this is just kind of fun, this classroom was studying Antarctica and the animals that lived there, so this table, sensory table, which you often think of as just water, often has lots of other things, this had a little bit of water and a very big ice block in it, so they were watching how icebergs melted and the animals playing on there. There needs to be evaluation and assessment, we provide that, that's part of what Linda monitors, to make sure that's happening for us. And, that's our outdoor play space. Some pictures are related to nothing. A picture of professional development is not much fun. We are also required to have certain levels of professional development on a yearly basis, and particularly related to literacy, diversity, and assessment. This must be part of a field trip, it's an ECDC picture in the summer, that the ice cream truck shows up at the Center for them, so certainly a big treat. And, that was exploring chalk and what it does, and the imprints it does on them. So that's a very quick synopsis of what a school readiness program looks like, or the things we're required to do. Anything else?
I had one last thing I just wanted to add, just so you're aware too, because it is a, I don't know if this is on, but I'll talk a little loud.
Is it?
Okay. Is that, in order to be in the school readiness program, centers have to be accredited by the National Association of Education for Young Children. So that is quite a rigorous process to go through. It includes self-study, it includes family input, it includes program portfolios, classroom portfolios, and then there is an assessor who comes in to make sure that everything is met. And part of that, when you have accreditation, when you are accredited, it means that you are recognized as a high-quality program. So that is a requirement, and one that Riverfront and the Early Childhood Development Center have been accredited for years. They both just went through that in the last year. It does last for five years, so they went through that. And usually, the process starts about a year or so before. So, when you get accredited, you can say, oh, good. And then about three and a half years in, you've got to start the process and update everything all over again. Yep. So, I just wanted to, I forgot to mention that before, but that is a very important piece, and, and want to be very proud of.
Councilor Heed had another question for you.
You have about $509,000 coming as part of a competitive grant? And I, I forget now, was this state money or federal money?
That is state money.
Okay. And it's been pretty consistent over?
It's been pretty flat.
It hasn't changed, no cost of living, no. The last year's legislation did provide some funding in time for Office of Early Childhood to look at all of the funding levels across the CDC and the school readiness competitive and, what's the other name? Sorry. Competitive and-
Priority.
Priority, thank you. And care for kids, and see if there was a way to make equity across, because it's not the fault of a child or a family that you, you receive this funding and, and they receive this funding, and then there's differences in what somebody pays. It's still, the same children are all in the same classrooms, so should we not be paid, paid the same kind of fee across the way for every slot that we have? It's easier for tracking as well. So that report has not come out yet, but they're in the midst of working on that.
Groton has, over the years, we used to be back in the early 2000, it was only about 13 seats. In the past 10 years, we have moved from 13 seats up to 58. That is a huge improvement, because they were trying for years to get more and more slots available. So through Children's First and school readiness, we actually have moved up, right now, 45 extra seats over the past 10 years.
We should, as a fairly small city, be proud of those slots in that they are always full. The very big cities have a really hard time recruiting enough children to fill all of their spots and end up returning money back. And if that happens over a period of time, that's where the dollars get reallocated, and they look at seats that have been historically unused and start decreasing those numbers. It's kind of sad to think of Waterbury losing money for school readiness, because there has to be children that really, really need, but that's how we end up with some extra seats, so.
So we have two counselors that wanted to also ask questions, Councilors Saperi and Councilor Attwater.
I just wanted to know, how many hours a day are the kids there?
The, the center at Riverfront is open from 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Depends on the parents' work hours, on how long they are there. We do not encourage anyone to be there for 11 hours, it's a long day for children. School readiness requires the school day, school year, to be there from 9:00 to 3:00. So a six-hour day is the minimum, but they can spend more.
But they could stay from, what is it, 8:00 to 5:00?
6:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Usually, we see families that drop off at 6:00, somebody else picks up maybe, you know, two parents working, they're working different shifts. Not many children spend more than eight to nine hours, depending on draft, driving time for parents.
Councilor Attwater.
I just wanted to clarify for the public and myself, it's Children First Groton, and yet your website is Groton Children First. Is that a misprint, or is that correct?
I, yeah, I copied that.
Guess we better look, because I asked.
And I did a cop, I did a copy and, like a cut and paste kind of a thing, but I will-
Should be Children's First Groton.
If someone was wanting to contact you, it would be-
Right, exactly.
Sure that we had the correct-
We'll look it up tomorrow and-
I'll let you know.
Great. Councilor Schmidt?
And I just wanted to ask, is this program, in addition to the children who do go to elementary school, who are three and four years old?
So the school system does have some programs for three and four-year-olds, yes? And those, I believe, are all for children that have IEPs?
I, have what?
They used to have Title I.
They might be for children with special needs, with identified special needs, that are in the school system.
I think in the elementary schools, they're, they're children with, they're just regular children, and they don't have special needs.
If the school's receiving, I'm not sure what the grant would be this now, it used to be like Title I and things like that, they receive monies from the state to have pre-K classes within the school districts. I'm not sure what the title is anymore, I haven't been in the buildings that often. So, they do have pre-K, but usually they come out of grant money from the state.
Right. So that is in addition to your program?
Right.
Thank you.
Any other counselors have questions? That's so cute. Councilor O.
You should add a picture of your kids going to the library, it's priceless.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, we, we're within walking distance of Bill Memorial Library, so all of our children, from the babies up to the oldest children, go to the library every week, or the librarian comes to us. So a walking field trip up there, it's a great partnership.
They're all hand-holding onto a rope?
Yes.
Going up there, adorable.
There's rings on a rope, and you can't go off the property until you can learn to hang on, stay, keep your hand on that rope and follow in that line.
It's great.
And so, a little plug, the 21st of December is the Winter Solstice, and if you did not hear about Make Music Day in May, it's a national event in Connecticut, participated for the first time this year. Riverfront participated, had some concerts in our garden. They have now added Winter Solstice Make Music Day, which is a winter parade. And so we will be parading at 9:30 in the morning to Bill Memorial Library for some activities with music when we get there, with our bells and our chimes, and whatever it is, that's instruments that anybody has. And the public is invited to be part of that parade, or watch that parade.
And I just wanted to add, because we have some other materials that we- And I just wanted to add, because we have some other materials that we were going to leave. The TVCCA Little Learners, which is located on Central Avenue, they are interested in, in the future, hopefully, getting some school readiness slots. They submitted an RFP in 2017. I'm assuming that they will probably try to do that again. So as Kevin said, the Groton has added on slots. If we are fortunate enough to get some more, I know that they're interested. So there is some information about the TVCCA Little Learners program. Sue Radway also has some business cards, and I left some cards too. So if you did need to get in touch with us, those emails are, that contact information I know is correct, and I will check on that. And I'll let Counselor Atwater know whether or not it needs to be corrected.
Linda, I did just send you an email, and it hasn't bounced back, so that may be...
Oh, okay.
It is. Okay. Thank you.
At TVCCA. Rep, did you want to mention anything? Are you good?
No, I think it was your last meeting.
Okay, okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for coming out and letting us know, but also letting the public know about the programs that are available at Riverfront. So we appreciate all your work, and I'm happy that we can do something as simple as helping you apply for a grant, so you can keep doing your job.
Thank you for having us.
And I'll let Counselor Atwater know with Council Superior laws how we can help with doing that at the meeting more so.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. We had a request for recess. We'll take a five-minute break, please. Okay. We are back in session, and we are on item 10.2, 2018-223-3. Counselor Parker.
All right. This is on page 35, sorry. I am reading the motion and the whereas, correct?
We're reading the stuff that's actually on page 36, please. Yes.
"The sale of town property. Whereas the town of Groton is the owner of real property, pin 260819714055, commonly referred to as Noyant Gardens. And whereas the town received a request from Mike Speller, the co-owner of neighboring property to purchase 0.09 acre portion of the Noyant Gardens property. And whereas the town council held a public hearing per State Statute 7-163E for the sale of real property owned by the town on Tuesday, October 2, 2018, at 6:30 p.m. And whereas the property proposed for sale was appraised at $11,700. And whereas the town did incur certain other costs, now therefore be it resolved that the town council authorized the sale of 0.08 acres to Michael and Valerie Speller for the price of $12,500. And be it further resolved that the town manager is authorized to sign any necessary documents to effectuate the sale. And be it further resolved that the proceeds of the sale shall be placed in a new fund to be placed in a new fund to be used for cleanup of nuisance properties." I so move.
Second. Move by Parker and seconded by Franco. There is, it is point, 0.09 acres? That's okay. You got it the first time, but in the resolved. It's good. We're all good. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of item 2018-223-3, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. So moved unanimously. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Just to mention that it does have to go through the RTM, because it's over $10,000.
Do we need to amend the resolution to say that?
No, it's fine. It's required to go through there no matter what.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you. So we are on item 2018-382-1, Community Outreach Coordinator position on page 37. This is Counselor Franco.
Resolution approving new job description for the Recreation Division of the Parks and Recreation Department. Whereas, the town has a vacancy in the Recreation Division, which has yet to be filled. And whereas assessing, evaluating, analyzing our critical functions within the Recreational Division of the Parks and Recreational Department, and there is necessary to create a job description to include skills for both today and future needs. And whereas, the new job description has been suggested by the Director of Parks and Recreation, and the position will continue to evolve to keep in step with community demands. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council approves the new job description for the Parks and Recreation Department, Community Outreach Coordinator. I so move.
Second. Move by Franco, seconded by Overy. Is there a discussion on this item? Counselor Zepari.
We have discussed this at Committee of the Whole when we referred it to the council.
Correct. All of these items have come through Committee of the Whole. So if you need further information, you can go back in and look at the minutes or the videotape. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of 2018-382-1, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. So moved unanimously. Counselor Heath, we are on to 2018-425-1, Tax Increment Financing City Policy Acceptance.
I'll make a motion for a resolution to accept the city tax increment financing TIF policy. Whereas, TIF is used to invest in economic development by allowing some or all of public and or private costs associated with the development to be financed over time by increases in the property tax revenues that are generated by the new development. And whereas, a TIF policy which outlines the process of planning for reviewing, approving, and implementing TIF districts was adopted by the town council on March 6, 2018. A separate city TIF policy was adopted by the city on September 4, 2018. The two policies are consistent with each other in their design requirements and how they were adopted. And whereas, to keep our TIF programs consistent, the town of Groton should accept the city of Groton's TIF policy. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby accepts the city of Groton TIF policy as written. I so move.
Second. Move by Heath and seconded by Parker. Any discussion on this item?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Did we vote on this in the COW?
We discussed it.
We accepted it.
Mr. Burd is checking?
I think we accepted the report.
I can look too, if you don't, if I'm not sure. Yes, we did. To recommend a resolution accepting the city of Groton's tax increment financing policy as written, eight in favor, one opposed, and zero abstaining. That was, okay. Is that in our minutes? That was on the October 23rd COW.
Was it joint COW?
Yes, yes. Okay. Any other questions? Are you good?
Is it in this packet?
It is in the, it was in the joint COW with the city and town.
We have, we have the minutes from the 23rd here. I don't...
That's a special council meeting. You know, that's different. It's the same night.
You don't have the COW minutes. That was the night we went in and out a bunch of times.
Right.
You're only looking at town council minutes. Counselor Franco.
Okay. Counselor Zepari.
I was in opposition to this before, because the, as it was structured, that agreement permits the town, the city of Groton to change it at will. And I think that that's, you know, there was a discussion that we trusted all the people that were involved, and it was all in good faith, who were setting up something that's going to go well beyond the tenure of all of us here and all of us in the city, and all of those in the city. And I think that other people would find that and say, okay, here's the, here's the out of the agreement, and we can do just what we please. And I just would like to see, if we can make, take the trouble to make an agreement, we should have something that is binding for everyone and not with a loophole. So I still am opposed to it for that reason.
You opposed to TIF policy or for the...
To the, to the adopting an agreement with the city on those terms. I think the TIF policy is an excellent idea, and I think we should promote a TIF policy. But I don't think this agreement is, is a good one.
And I believe that was, that issue was addressed when we were in the COW, and I think one of the rationales given was that if the city decided to go ahead with something that the town wasn't necessarily interested in, this would give them the ability to move ahead with that without us.
I wish I could have heard you say what you said.
I'm sorry.
I do have my hearing aids, but I just couldn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Okay. So we are, he turned the mic over. I'm sorry.
He didn't hear what you just said.
Yeah, he didn't hear.
Oh, I thought you were referring to the meeting. I'm sorry. So I believe it was addressed in the, in the joint COW meeting, because there might arise a situation where the city wanted to pursue something that the town was not interested in pursuing, and that gives them the ability to do it without us. So if there's a project that they like, but we're not necessarily in favor of going after, this gives them the ability to do that. I believe, Mr. Burd, is that correct?
That's correct, but it would not affect our tax dollars when you receive, only the city's.
All right. So...
Other, we would gain the benefit of approving.
Right.
But I think part of the reasoning was to allow some flexibility, so that if the town is focused in other areas and the city wants to focus over here, they can do so without restricting. I don't think it was designed to enable the city to make an agreement with the town and then decide, well, we're not going to do that. Now we're going to do this, you know? It's not like an out so much. It's just flexibility.
Right. Okay. So we are on, let me get the number back. I know. We are on 2018-425-1. If there's no further discussion, we'll call for a vote on that item. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Could I just point out too, that we can do one without them. Also, they might choose not to do what we're doing. So we have a reciprocal, that we can do it without them.
So the vote was eight in favor, one opposed, Zepari, and zero abstaining. We are on to 2018-430-1, FYE 2019 Contingency Transfers Wage Adjustments. This is page 41, but the resolution is on page 42. Counselor Overy.
Whereas, the town charter provides for general contingency transfers during the year. And whereas, during FYE 2019 budget deliberation, the labor agreement for the United Steelworkers, POCs, Public Works employees has not been settled, and the FYE 2018 wage increases were not included in the department's FYE 2019 budget. Whereas, wage increases for the United Steelworkers, POCs, Public Works are now known and should be incorporated into department's FYI, FYE 2019 budget through a general contingency transfer. Resolved that $57,110 is transferred from the General Fund Contingency Function Number 1074 to the following General Fund Department functions, and refer to the RTM for approval. I so move.
Can you read the, the table, please, with the function and then the department and the amount, please?
Transfer from contingency to function. Function 1035 and 1064. Departments Public Works, POCs, and Recreation. Public Works is $45,00947. POCs and Recreation is $11,163, with a total of $57,110. I so move.
Move by Overy, seconded by Heath. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of 2018-430-1, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. So moved unanimously. We are on to 2018-400-1, DUI Enforcement Program Grant on page 43. The resolution is on 44. This is Counselor Atwater.
Whereas, Groton Town Police Department plans to legalize the Connecticut Department of Transportation's Division of Highway Safety Comprehensive DUI Enforcement Program Grant, funding to support the enforcement operations that go beyond normal police patrols. And whereas, the goal of the program grant is to support law enforcement agencies and their enforcement operations by increasing police presence through the combination of extra DUI patrols and sobriety checkpoints, to substantially reduce the number of alcohol-related crashes, and to reduce the number of individuals driving under the influence of drugs and/or alcohol. And whereas, the goal of the grant is to support enforcement operations that go above and beyond normal patrol, police patrols, in order to reduce the number of alcohol-related crashes and the number of individuals driving under the influence during the grant period, which runs November 21, 2018 through September 7, 2019. Therefore, be it resolved, the town manager, John Burd, may apply for the Connecticut Department of Transportation's Division of Highway Safety Comprehensive DUI Enforcement Program Grant, with an anticipated total grant amount of $58,600. I so move.
Second. Move by Atwater, seconded by Schmidt. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none. All those in favor of 2018-4001, DUI Enforcement Program Grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. So moved unanimously. We are on to 2018-445, Emergency Management Performance Grant, page 45. Resolution is on page 46. Counselor Schmidt, please.
Resolved that the Groton Town Council may enter into, with, and deliver to, the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which deems to be necessary or appropriate. And further resolved that John Burd, as town manager of the town of Groton, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Groton Town Council, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents. I so move.
Second. Move by Schmidt, seconded by Franco. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of 2018-445-1, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. So moved unanimously. We are on to 2018-433-1, Capital Reserve Appropriation for Designing and Construction of Police Station UPS, page 47, but the resolution is on page 48. Counselor Zepari, please.
On behalf of the council, I'll read this. Whereas funds were approved in fiscal year 2016, capital improvement budget for the replacement of the uninterruptible power supply, UPS units. And whereas, the project was bid, and the only bid received was rejected by the town for insufficient funds. And whereas, a detailed engineering review was conducted in August of 2019, which investigated all options for the replacement of these units, taking into account current and future needs. And whereas, the engineering review strongly recommended Option 4, whose advantages are that it addresses the needs of the, to replace the existing units, it maintains redundancy for 9/11 dispatch function, provides redundancy for the new radio base stations, and ensures that the electrical system remains configured such that a single point of failure would not disable the electrical system. And whereas, Public Works and Public Police Departments concur with Option 4, and has made that recommendation to the town council. And therefore, be it resolved, that supplemental appropriation of $330,000 be made from the Capital Reserve Fund, unassigned balance for a new fiscal year 2019 capital project, uninterruptible power supply.
And it's got to be referred, refer that to the RTM, Counselor Zepari?
Yes, and refer it to the RTM. So move.
Second. Thank you. Move by Zepari, seconded by Heath. Any discussion on the UPS? Counselor Heath?
I do. I had a few questions by people, citizens, after we walked out, not that night, but... but a few days later. And I do want to say that, just for the record, when I walked in here that night, I was initially opposed to this transfer of funds, but I think we all know, or those of us who have been on a tour of the police department, the technological infrastructure is dated and failing. We know this. And I want to be clear, this is not a transfer to enhance salaries, or by Cadillac benefits, or make the police station like a nice, comfortable place to be. This is a safety issue. We have the funds in the CIP fund, and I'm concerned that delay could result in a public safety system failure, because initially I thought we should put it in the budget for this next year. But then, when you go through and we listen to the police chief and the other people that were here, if we wait till that time, then the time lag that then, when you get it in place, is that much later, and that technically would be after hurricane season next year. So I don't think we can wait to do this. I think it needs to be done. We have the money, and I also think option four is the right option, because it puts the best system in place the first time, so we don't have to go back and do it again. But all that being said, I do have one question, which is, if this is coming out of the CIP budget, are there other CIP items that we have to, or that you'll have to postpone or delay?
This is out of the fund balance. It's not allocated to any project.
Okay.
So we have two more questions. We have Counselor Parker and Zepari.
All right. A clarification, actually. Wasn't it in two thousand, August of 2018, not 2019?
Fourth paragraph.
Fourth paragraph of the whereas.
Third whereas.
The third whereas.
Yeah, that's true.
This should be 2018. Thank you.
Is that it, Counselor Parker?
Yes.
We're ahead of ourselves.
Counselors Zepari?
I, I made this motion because it was my turn to read, but I'm opposed to this motion. The motion, the need for this uninterrupted power source is because if there is a power failure, the automatic generator will kick in, but it'll take five to fifteen seconds for the generator to kick in and generate power for, for the police station. In that time, the computer units will shut down, and then it'll take them five minutes. The police chief wrote us a letter saying it would take five minutes for the computer to boot up again. Okay? Now, we, the, the project is to install two forty kilowatt UPS units to replace that power. Now, I don't, I have a computer that I think uses one twentieth of one kilowatt. And if you have something ten times more powerful than my computer, it will use one-half of a kilowatt. And if you have something a hundred times more powerful, I don't know, what's it going to use? Twenty kilowatts. Why do we need eighty kilowatts for that computer? And there is an issue with, with the radios, the radio transmitters. Now, if the radio transmitters are not computerized themselves, radio transmission, I know, consumes a good deal of power. But if they are not, if that part of the power consumption is not under computer control, then they will immediately, within fifteen seconds, they'll be broadcasting anything that comes up. So what we need, this has to be clarified to me before I can approve of this. But we need a much smaller UPS unit, and we need it only for the computer. We don't need it for the rest of the building. The rest of the building, the lights will go out, and they'll come back on in five to fifteen seconds when the generator runs. And I don't think that's unacceptable. I think that's what the rest of us would very much love to have whenever there's a power interruption. But it doesn't, the reason why we want the UPS system is so that we can continue to respond promptly to any calls. The other side of this coin is that this does nothing for all of the other failures in the, in the emergency system. It does nothing for, for instance, for a hack-in, hacking incident where a virus is placed on the computer. It does nothing for a hard drive failure or a car burning out. That would put the computers down indefinitely. And finally, when they did have a power outage, the police wrote, immediately, the dispatcher in ledger took over the dispatches for the time of Groton, because the system is integrated with, with the other police departments around. So I think we should, we should have a UPS system. We should have something that, that maintains the computer, but I don't think we need eighty kilowatts. And that's where the money goes.
Okay, so, Mr. Burt first, and then Counselor Parker.
Just to mention, you know, it was kind of dictated through an engineering study on what we need, which leaves room to grow, and we need redundancies. You need two different ones. But we also found out during testing that the town's telephone systems are on it, and I believe some other things, like certain networks, and it actually affects outside of that building. It affects other buildings, too.
But all of those networks, are they lit, are they going down for a full five minutes, or do they go down for five to fifteen seconds?
Well, if the UPS doesn't come on, well, the computers would reboot. It'd be five minutes, five, ten minutes.
Yeah, but I, but the other, the other thing is, the other town, are they going to suffer? Are the people in Groton at risk because the rest of the town has a five-minute gap in telephone service?
Not, not the rest of the town, but I, I don't know how much we want to delay with these. Twice now, we've run tests, and each time we had failures with each UPS. The second time took, they ran it in the morning and took to three PM. They didn't think they were getting the second UPS back up and running. They thought it was dead for good.
From what I understand, it is.
Huh?
From what I understand, they didn't get it back.
Excuse me, Mr. Burt?
They got it eventually at three PM.
Can we let Mr. Burt finish, please?
They actually got it going eventually at three PM. They didn't think they were going to get it going again. But I, I trust in the engineering report that we need at least something close to this. I don't know, we've already spent a lot of money on that report. I don't know if you want to re, I wouldn't recommend doing something different without restarting it.
Counselor Parker?
It's not just one computer system. It's all, I believe it's all the systems, because it's running off of different battery things. So if one thing shuts down, it shuts everything down, so that means no access to dispatch, or for them to get into the computer systems to log calls in or anything like that, both sides. So if there's nothing there, they're not going to be able, this is for public safety. This is important. It's got to be done.
I'm just wondering how many computers is it?
Just add on, each of those, each of the radios that the officers are using is actually a computer. It's actually got its own individual, when you look at that bank of computers, they'll be without their radios for five minutes, too.
Which, which officer's radios? The officers aren't patrolled?
Yeah.
The radio, if you look at the one, two, the fourth whereas, it lists off some of the items that would be...
The newer radios are actually computers. They're, they're actually tied into individual stations in the, in the dispatch, or in the building. And when the power goes down, those have to reboot, too, each of them. So the, so you'd be without radios even.
And it wasn't at the very next day after we approved this in COW is when they had the, the problem?
The first failure. There was another one when they retested a week later.
Counselor, our town clerk?
I think five minutes without a radio for officers is just too dangerous.
We were explained that also, that the door lock systems would fail. And so if you were interviewing a suspect, you could either be locked in, or the door could be locked open. So there was an issue with that also.
Counselor Franco, and then we'll go back to Mr. Burt.
So I also recall the chief stating that there are state requirements that they have to abide by having backup systems. And the liabilities that could happen, from what I recall from that meeting, was if somebody suffers, and we knew we had an issue, and we didn't take care of it properly, that would open up the town for huge liabilities. Also, as other areas in the buildings would be, you know, if the power goes out, that would affect the cells, all the cameras, like you mentioned, the door locks, people without having access in, through the building at all, or even knowing what maybe, what is going on in the cells down there, because the cameras would be out as well, and there would be no lights. And, and as was just mentioned, the radios. So, I mean, this is a big liability that we are aware of, that we know. So if we don't take action, that's major liability if somebody suffers.
I'll go back to what I said before, is I don't know that, for instance, the locks require computer access and require computer rebooting. They may come up, the locks may be activated again when power comes on, in the, in the few seconds of power. They certainly would be reactivated in five minutes when the computer reboots. I think that the big problem is getting emergency dispatch, and that's the thing we should be most concerned about. But that's, that's just one person's opinion.
Mr. Burt, did you have something else to add?
Just a couple. One of the reasons we are doing the new, the new radio system is we've had incidents where officers had to use their cell phones because there wasn't coverage. Well, this is similar. If you had it go down, you might not even know, at least with that coverage issue, you might know you're in an area where there's coverage issues, you have to use your cellphone. But if you suddenly don't have your radio, and you're in the middle of something, that's very, that's even more dangerous. This, this, to me, is about the most dangerous, this is even, in some ways, more important than the radio system, at least an equal component of it. And it's good to build these things to grow, because we know everything's going computerized. We want to make sure we can add on and not redo it all in five years.
Okay. So we are on... 2018-433-1. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. So it passes eight in favor, one opposed, Zepari, and zero abstentions. Next is 2018-432-1, update job description, request for project management specialist, page forty-nine, but I believe the resolution is on page fifty. Counselor Baumgartner.
Whereas the last revision to the job description was in September nineteen ninety-six, there is necessity to enhance the job description to include knowledge for, for both today and future use of technology. And whereas the revisions to the job description have been suggested by the Director of Public Works and reviewed by the Human Recourse Department, is, should that be resource?
I believe so.
Or recourse, in case you need...
The Human Resource Department. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council approves the revised job description for the project management specialist. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Heath. Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote on 2018-432-1. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. So moved unanimously. 2018-219-3, extension of effective date for the Planning and Zoning Commission merger. This is page fifty-one, but the resolution is on fifty-two, please.
Resolution extending the effective date of ordinance number two-eight-six for the designation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. On June twentieth, two thousand seventeen, the town council passed ordinance number two-eight-six to designate the planning commission as the Planning and Zoning Commission and to abolish the zoning commission effective June fourth, two thousand nineteen.
January.
January. Thank you. January fourth, two thousand nineteen, where it is anticipated that the regulations will be written by February two thousand nineteen. Whereas the required public hearing notifications and public hearing will extend beyond the current ordinance effective date. Whereas the zoning commission is willing to serve the extra time to complete the rewrite project. Whereas the regulation rewrite can be completed by July thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Whereas a public hearing was held on October twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, to extend the effective date of the ordinance. Whereas no comments were received at the public hearing. And now therefore be it resolved that the effective date of ordinance number two-eight-six, the time period for designation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and abolishing of the zoning commission, is hereby extended to July thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Baumgartner. Seeing no discussion, we will vote on 2018-219-3. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. So moved unanimously. We are on to 2018-442-1, DEC De Brownfield Grant, Groton Heights, page fifty-three. The resolution is on page fifty-four. Counselor Franco.
Whereas the State of Connecticut has issued a grant under the Brownfield Remediation Program to fund remediation, abatement, and demolition activities prior to redevelopment of a Brownfield site. And whereas, the purpose of applying for this grant is the Town of Groton wishes to see the former Groton Heights School at two forty-four Monument Street remediated and redeveloped into a beneficial use of the town and placed on the town tax rolls. And whereas, the proposals from private development firms were solicited over the summer, and the remediation is intended to facilitate redevelopment. And whereas, the estimated cost to remediate the property while keeping the historic building is estimated to cost more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the Town of Groton Office Planning and Development Services plan to apply for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to assist in the remediation, now therefore be it resolved that the town council authorizes the town manager, John Burt, or his authorized representative to submit an application to the State of Connecticut Department of Economic and Development, Economic and Community Development. Further, authorizes John Burt, town manager, to sign the Brownfields grant agreement upon receipt of said grant. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Franco, seconded by Parker. Counselor Baumgartner.
I'm sure many of you had heard, have heard criticisms or frustrations about the town not being able to put school buildings on the tax rolls. And I think this is one big step to really making a real good site, you know, a site for development. So, you know, looking forward to see this application go through, and I'll be supporting it.
Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of 2018-442-1, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. So moved unanimously. To 2018-419-1, alteration of scenic road, twelve oh one River Road, request for public hearing. This is on page fifty-five, but the resolution is on fifty-six. Counselor Heath.
I'll make a motion for the resolution, resolution set a public hearing, sorry, excuse me, for alteration of a scenic road, twelve oh one River Road, whereas Article Five of the Groton Code of Ordinances, Designation of Scenic Roads prohibits a scenic road from being altered or improved, including but not limited to widening of the right-of-way or of the travel portion of the highway, paving changes of grade, straightening, removal of stone walls, and removal of mature trees, except for good cause determined by the council after a public hearing. Whereas Aza Bender, owner of twelve oh one River Road, has requested the town council hold a public hearing to solicit public input regarding the alteration of the River Road right-of-way in order to install a new driveway, and now therefore be it resolved that the town council will hold a public hearing regarding the alteration of River Road on December fourth, twenty eighteen. I so move.
Second. Moved by Heath, seconded by Franco. Seeing no discussion, we're just simply setting the public hearing date this evening. All those in favor of 2018-419-1, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. So moved unanimously. We are on to 2018-420-1, alteration of a scenic road, Sandy Hollow Road, Mystic Hollow re-subdivision, request for public hearing. Counselor O'Bree, page fifty-eight is the resolution, please.
Resolution to set a public hearing for alterations of scenic road, Sandy Hollow Road, whereas Article Five of the Groton Code of Ordinances, Designation of Scenic Roads prohibits a scenic road from being altered or improved, including but not limited to widening of the right-of-way, of the travel portion of the highway, paving, change of grade, straightening, removal of stone walls, and removal of mature trees, except for good cause determined by the council after a public hearing. Whereas Joe...
Astronunzia.
Thank you. For brown builders, the developer of the Mystic Hollow re-subdivision on Sandy Hollow Road has requested the town council hold a public hearing to solicit public input regarding the alterations of Sandy Hollow Road right-of-way in order to stall, install five new driveways, and now therefore be resolved that the town council will hold a public hearing regarding the alterations of Sandy Hollow Road on December fourth, two thousand eighteen. I so move.
Second. Moved by O'Bree, seconded by Schmidt. Again, this is just simply setting a public hearing date. Again, this is just simply setting a public hearing date. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of 2018-420-1, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are on to 2018-86-3, and this is also a public hearing setting on page 60. Councilor Atwater.
Whereas, on July 24th, 2018, and August 28th, 2018, the Committee of the Whole met and ready for session and discussed the Blight Ordinance, best practices associated with remediation, and potential revisions with staff from the Office of Planning and Development Services. Whereas, a brief history of the Blight Ordinance, the governing statutes within the Connecticut general statutes, and the implementation process of the ordinance was presented by the code enforcement officer. And whereas, the Committee of the Whole directed staff to consider revisions as discussed in the meeting. Whereas, the town of Groton Office of Planning and Development Services presented a revised draft of the Blight Ordinance to the Committee of the Whole on October 23rd, 2018. And now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby sets a public hearing for the revisions of the Blight Ordinance for December 4th, 2018. I so move.
Second.
Wow. How do I pick a board about that? Who hasn't had their name in the minutes here? Atwater's Perry. Okay. Again, setting a public hearing date, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions, so moved unanimously. That takes care of all the new business. Is there anything under other business that any council would like to raise?
I would.
Councilor Franco?
I was wondering if we could maybe announce some of the upcoming activities that were presented in the town council weekly status report, such as the community center has a grand opening on November 8th. The Groton Community Center is at the old Fitch Building. It's from 5:00 to 6:30 on November 8th. I believe there were some other things. The Naval and Maritime Consortium lunch on Thursday, November 8th, from 4:00 to 6:00 at Avery Point, Branford House. Groton Human Services is looking for donations to create food baskets so they can hand those out to about 500 Groton families in need this year. And I have some other items, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I apologize. It's your job.
I would also like to ask, I don't know if we could have, I don't know if we're allowed to even ask, if the registrars or even Betsy could answer these questions about Election Day. I know from Butler, there are some issues besides the construction issue, which I think we should also maybe look at when we have non-town construction going, non-town workers doing construction to make sure that they're not blocking any voting polls in the future. But SB Butler, from what I have been told by numerous people, because they have one-way streets, they weren't marked very clearly, and people were coming in the wrong way. And then the line was coming in the wrong way, people were trying to get out, and it just created gridlock. And it took 15 minutes for people to back out of the wrong way. They had to back out one at a time out of that area. And I guess it was creating quite a chaos over there. So I don't know if we could put up signs.
Sounds logical.
I'm sorry, what?
Sounds logical.
And then also, and then people were saying that inside, they were waiting like 25 minutes. I don't know. I mean, we were, as you had told me earlier, they were planning for a large turnout, but I don't know if they could have had more staff on. I don't know. If they're planning for such a large turnout, if they could have more.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I'm not familiar with the planning side of what the registrars, you know, how they, I know that we did have a problem several years ago, that we did not expect the turnout that we'd had in the presidential race. And literally, at 7:30 in the morning, I was helping, assisting, trying to find competent people to train right there to work poll workers. It was just, it was just, but I didn't see, I didn't get any feedback except the SB Butler road closure issue. That's the only feedback I got. And one other issue today about a poll worker, election official, being a little too helpful with assisting someone, which I, again, I don't have any jurisdiction over any of these things. I'd be more than willing to, you know, and happy to talk to the registrars, and maybe they'd like to come in and explain to you how their procedure is, you know, for staffing for large elections. Because everybody knew that this was going to be a larger turnout based on an open race for the governor. When it's an open race, it's going to be more activity. But we didn't expect it like this.
Right. Because I know at Butler, they had one person checking people through, and the line was pretty large in the morning. There was at least a 25-minute wait, and people left. That's what I was being told. So, and then also, I would like to request that maybe Knowing Gardens Task Force come back and speak to us. I have questions, I have further questions that have been raised since our last meeting with them. And specifically, one, one item with them, that they have not been turning in any minutes. So I would like to have them come in, and I have quite a few more questions for them. And I would also like to note that, and this is just, I'm making comment, and I don't want to, I don't believe this is for debate, but I think when we are discussing staff, like departments in our town, and we, and people are speaking about them, I don't believe they should be insinuating in any type that there's any kind of fraudulent, fraudulent items going on within our finances. If, I believe making accusations should only be done if there is some kind of proof, instead of just throwing out people's opinions on what they think may or may not be happening. I think stating specifically, speaking about the police officers and their wall budget, they, we just approved that for this year's budget. I mean, we aren't even through this year's budget. I mean, maybe they plan to do it in the spring, I don't know. But to sit there and say there might be something fraudulent going on because they haven't used it yet, I think that's premature. And there is no kind of opinion being.
Order. Okay.
And I believe there should be more proof than just throwing out opinion. And that's my.
Agreed.
Thank you.
We'll leave it at that. I think, I think you made your point.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Heath. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstaining, so moved unanimously.